Council Agenda Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Regular Township Council Meeting of November 26, 2024. Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Publics Meeting Law by filing the notice of the office and the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 4, 2024, where it was remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on Star Ledger on January 8, 2024. Please rise for flag salute. Mr. Naglia, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mysella.
Here.
Mr. Naglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Barbario, Township Attorney Michael Avery, and myself, Deputy Clerk Leslie Miller.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, December 3, 2024, 7:00 p.m. Agenda meeting, December 17, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Regular meeting. Okay, at this time, we're going to be going into executive session. Executive Session Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, affordable housing, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Hopefully, we won't be too long. Open session?
Motion.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Avery.
Yes, Council President. We emerged from executive session at what looks like 7:38 p.m., where we discussed one matter, which was an attorney-client privilege matter dealing with affordable housing. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance, second reading, and public hearing, none. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, if you'd like to come up, please, all you have to do is state your name. You'll be given five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Northover. I'm the president of the Mount Tabor County Meeting Association. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I'd like to thank the mayor, his administration, and Councilor Naglia for the town board that was held in Mount Tabor last night. I think it was a very constructive meeting and very helpful, and I particularly appreciate the showing of the horse department in a very professional and clear way, which they laid out what happened this year in the Galveston County Development Project, and laid out their plans for next year. We look forward to working with them next year and improving communication with the presidents. We hope sincerely, and I know the mayor does, that we have a better contractor next year. I'm sure the council shares that opinion. And I'd also, I noted when I came tonight, in the list of resolutions we've come up later, the resolutions, there is one approving the vote of a change order to be replaced before on each end of the base. I just wanted to say that that job has really impressed everybody in Mount Tabor. I think that contractor has done some virtue, and again, I'd like to thank the engineering department for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you just?
Just sign it.
Just sign it.
Yes.
Yeah, do something with that microphone.
It might be on. It's just, I don't know. It's close. Yep, it's on.
He was far away from everybody, that's why.
Kandalski, Precipity. So, I was going to ask about the work that was being done with, by Mr. Snikus, using the Highlands Council Fair Share Housing tool, and I presume that was part of what you guys were talking about. Is there anything that we could, we could hear in terms of whether that tool is helpful, whether we have more optimism about lower obligations, or anything else?
I think, we obviously don't want to have this debate in the public only be, and you're absolutely right, that's what Mr. Snikus was here, and Mr. Glass was here, to kind of brief the council on, you know, the numbers, and then using the Highlands Portal. So, I think everybody would agree, we try to reduce that number as much as humanly possible, but we don't want to, obviously, there's developers that, I don't know that there's any here, but they look at the videos and see, so we don't want to tip our hand as to what we're doing. So, there will be a public discussion, I think probably in January, depending on what the council determines, but all will be aired out. But I can assure you that they are utilizing every tool available to try to reduce that number.
Basically, what I wanted to hear was that, you know, given the crisis that it is, that, you know, you are making every effort. So, okay, very good. Second, I would just like to reflect on the conversation, the comment from Mr. Suarez at the last meeting, with his criticism of the administration, in that it used taxpayer money for a banner used in a public event with the mayor's name on it. I believe it was Mayor Barbario's pumpkin patch, and Mr. Cryan responded basically that this is business as usual. I want to go on record as strongly supporting Mr. Suarez's argument. Whether or not this is considered by every administration in the state to be business as usual, in my opinion, this is wrong. The criterion for such behavior, as noted in the media, every time there is an ethical issue like this, is the perception that it creates. It's not so much whether it's within or outside the law, but it's a matter of perception, and that's why judges recuse themselves even when there's no, you know, real legal issue. My perception is that such behavior is unethical, and that elected officials should not be allowed to take advantage of their positions to have the public pay for their self-promotion. Good elected officials do not do this. And in terms of self-promotion, I would find it much more appealing if an elected official made a point to say that they or their donors paid for such promotional material instead of letting taxpayers pick up the bill. Thank you.
Nikomek, Lake High Water. I'd like to follow up Ken, because I was hearing Mr. Suarez spoke, and I spoke to him afterward, and he was unaware of what happened during the Soriano administration. And things like this is a problem with our system, the partisanship, or placing a, your political party or your individual interest above the interests of the community or the country. But this is from October 15, in the Daily Record, and Mayor Soriano had bought a sign for the high school, and Mayor Bar, former Mayor Barbario at the time was upset and made a media event of it. And Soriano did not direct reimbursement from his association, as one email indicated he would. So, he created a storm in Teacup, and he even went as far as said, "I'm calling on the Attorney General to investigate." He wanted Mayor Soriano investigating. But the truth was, Mayor Soriano ordered the town employees to hang the banner, and he paid $1,528 from his invoice, but it was paid for by his civic association. And the article goes on really about nothing, and it ends with Soriano purchased it legitimately. And even if he didn't pay for the sign with his own money, apparently, it's appropriate for a mayor to do something like this with, with the funds. So, like, I'm still, you know, a little confused about why all of that was made, made up when Mayor Soriano did it, and the only thing I could think of, he was a Democrat, or, you know, the, the other mayor wanted to take him out and replace him, so he made a storm, storm in the, in the Teacup. But the proof was there all along, so the article goes on about nothing, because in the end, Mayor Soriano paid for the sign. And that was during COVID and everything else, so I guess he wanted the graduating class to feel, I don't know, good or something? But, you know, it was, wasn't, it was a big deal when Soriano did it, but paid for it out of his own pocket, but if Mayor Barbario did it, and even had his name on it, like Mr. Suarez says, it didn't say Precipity Pumpkin Patch, it said Barbario's Pumpkin Patch, and we paid for it. And I also think it's totally inappropriate.
See no one else? Entertain a motion to close the public session?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Consent agenda be resolved. All items listed with asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial, but the Township Council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members show requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Consent agenda be resolved. All items listed with asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial, but the Township Council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members show requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Consent agenda be resolved. All items listed with asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial, but the Township Council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members show requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Approval of minutes. Agenda meeting, October 8, 2024. Regular meeting, October 22, 2024. Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mysella.
Yes.
Mr. Naglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, presentations, reports, mayor?
Thank you, Council President. It's going to be kind of lengthy today, because I'd like to know, the residents to know what goes on within the township. So, on November 13, I attended the Little Vikings Cheer Banquet, and it was pretty much an incredible evening. The Little Vikings Show is welcoming me with open arms, making me feel right at home. And then on the 14th, I attended the Precipity High School Cheer Banquet, and it was an evening brimmed with laughter, happiness, and unforgettable moments. And the reason why I bring this up is I watched these young ladies grow up in town since I've been mayor prior, and when I was a councilman as well. Also, on November 14, I joined the enthusiastic students of All Saints Academy for their fundraising walkathon. After doing a lap with the fourth graders, I toured the school with the principal, Leanne Gonzalez. The air was buzzing with excitement, and this was a fundraiser to support the essential educational programs. And then on November 16, I had the pleasure of joining the Precipity Hills High School Wrestling Boosters, along with Council Vice President Frank Naglia, for a pancake fundraiser at Applebee's. And it's kind of nice to go back and be with your alumni at Precipity Hills High School. And it's really good to be, it's crucial, in my opinion, to stand behind our athletes, ensure they have the necessary resources to thrive both on the mat and in life. Then on November 21, I attended the Lake High Water Elementary School PTA Tricky Tray, and I had a really great night, actually, they did very well for the fifth graders. And then November 22, which was a day of Thanksgiving, actually, I was at the community center, and I wanted to shine a spotlight on an incredible local hero, his name's Glenn Oakenberg of Victory Press Solutions. I met him at Doc's Home, and we shared many stories together, one, my father being in the Battle of the Bowls, his general contribution to the Precipity Food Pantry is a reminder that together we can make a difference. So, I want to thank Glenn for his kindness. Also, on November 22, I had the honor of witnessing the incredible work done by Table of Hope at County College of Morris. Despite the rain and snow, the dedicated volunteers, led by amazing Dawn King, who's also a Precipity resident, came together to provide turkey dinners, potato vescos, fruits, and pies. They handed out over 500 turkeys. Also, on Friday, November 22, I directed a generous donation of nearly 200 turkeys from Royal Coachman to the Precipity Interfaith Food Pantry, and this incredible gesture will go a long way in helping families in need. I'd like to thank Jeff Cordenia from Royal Coachman for his compassion and generosity. Also, on November 22, I was happy to accept a large donation of non-perishable food items from a food drive organized by Seaway International. Senior commi, at the Senior Community Summit, was filled with boxes containing pasta, beans, rice, cereals, good, and all that. So, I'd like to thank Raghu Aya and the community leader, Jigashaw, who assisted the volunteers, and they unloaded, and they, I got to tell you, they had a lot of food for our food pantry. I also like to thank, and if I say it wrong, I apologize, to Harish Samir Mayron Temple, the Chapayadum Temple, BAPS or B-A-P-S Temple, I Love Sai Temple, Sri Sai Venkaya Temple, Samis Griti Bahat Barati, Krypton Warriors Robotic Team, and HSS for their contributions to the community of Precipity and the food pantry, which is located inside the Precipity Senior Community Center at 1130 Noel Road. Excuse me, Council President, I have to go to another report. Here we go, I think this will do it. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Board of Ed on elections a few weeks ago. Township of Precipity Troy Hills voters had a great opportunity to choose who represent them, as our next U.S. President, U.S. Senator, District 11 Congressperson, county surrogate, county commissioner, and of course, who will represent them on the Township School District Board of Education. Congratulations to all who put themselves out there and for war who won, especially Matthew DeVito, Judy Meyer, and Cecil Abraham on their victory. Thank you to Suzie Gole for her service. The closeness of this race is an important reminder of the crucial role played by everybody and everyday citizens in our democratic process. Ada and Kevin came up to speak here tonight. The community meeting at Mount Tabor, the lead and galvanized mandate, and that was last night, we had another very productive community meeting with Mount Tabor. I want to thank the residents and Kevin as well for making this a very productive meeting. As you know, the federal government mandated that all lead water service lines be replaced, and the state made it more restrictive by mandating the galvanized be included too. We are winding down Phase 1 and working on a number of issues created by the contractor, legal utility services, we were forced to choose because they were the lowest bidder. Phase 2 will include triple the number of homes, so it's important for us to ensure we have everybody's contact information, so we can do our best to communicate. Our contract and engineers who are overseeing the job with our water utility have learned lessons that will not be repeated moving forward. The next phase will have a clear schedule from the contractor, and will have strict homeowners' notification requirements that will be followed. We have been working on planning process for months now, and we will continue to work on it and get many issues solved before we even put it out there for bid or shovel it in the ground. The project will ensure water safety for our residents, and that is the main focus. This is not a project we want to force on you. We realize that getting it done creates annoyance and interruption, as we heard last night. We will not allow any contractor vendor to add difficulty to our residents, and we will do our best to make it as smooth as possible. I want to thank you, Kevin, and the residents again for your understanding in the CMA as well. We are very close to settling into cannabis overall, and we'll have it ready for the next meeting. The issue that held it up are, we were considering not including distribution in the update, because it's not as profitable for towns as other categories, but a distributor was approved during their original iteration. The close office didn't have a copy of the resolution, but our council, our councilor, Mike Avery, found it. We are working through that process. Also, the reserving portion was not complete, and the draft was only sent to us yesterday. There's a lot to unpack with this issue, and we wanted to provide the council and the public time to review. I'm not going to get into the affordable housing mandate as directed by the township attorney with regards to, but there's a lot I would like to say. But anyway, recently, there was a new state crime bill signed into law. Governor Murphy signed a crime bill into law that increases penalties for home invasion and addresses juveniles that commit them. The new law, which passed overwhelmingly bipartisan support, and the legislature upgrades the types of robberies we've seen in Morris County to felonies, where criminals break into homes in search of car keys, which is now considered the equivalent of, to a home invasion under this new law. It also extends prison time for people who are convicted of invasions and burglaries and possession of deadly weapons, and allows teens 15 years or older to face prison sentences, up to 20 years, for committing those crimes. As you recall, this is the type of crime legislation that I've been advocating for. While more needs to be done at the state level to address the crime, I'm hopeful that this new law will serve as a greater deterrent for criminals and power our police department. That being said, I would also like to go back to the affordable housing. There is a subcommittee that will be created, and on that subcommittee, I asked Council President Paul Karifi to be on it, and Councilman Matt McGrath, so they will be serving with myself and the Towns administrator and the town planner, Ed Snikus, on the affordable housing outside the council. That's one of the things that is recommended by the state. Also, I would like to take congratulations to Nicholas Pronzino, hello, Nick, the new interim executive director for the Precipity PAL. Now, why am I bringing his name up? In town here, we have a very good organization, recreational organization, but we partner, we partner with the PAL. It helps us out, the town helps us out financially. But that being said, what we did this year was that we actually reduced our budget by $160,000 that we, we would give to the PAL. One is salary, and one is benefits. We may have an agreement that the PAL pays for their own director, the township no longer does pay for it, but we still partner when it comes to programs. So, Nick, I want to thank you, thank you for coming to my office today. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for the opportunity to work for the best town and the best residents. Every day, I'm grateful for this opportunity and for everything you do to make this a successful, terrific place to live. I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving surrounded by family, friends, and loved ones. Also, a reminder that this Saturday, November 30, is Small Business Saturday, so come out and support your local businesses. Also, the Christmas pre-lighting, save the date for the annual Christmas pre-lighting. Special guest Santa on Saturday, December 7, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. There will be special ga, I read that already, music by the Precipity High School Choir, they will be there, and Santa will arrive by Friday truck at 5:00 p.m. Friends of Lake High Water Winter Fest on Friday, December 8. The Friends of Lake High Water will be holding their High Water Winter Fest on Friday, December 8, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the gazebo on North Beverick Road. And Hanukkah is arriving late this year. To celebrate the beginning of a Hanukkah, the township will be hosting the annual menor lighting on December 26 at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Council President, thank you for your time, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Township Council?
Sure, I'll start. Thank you for the report, mayor. I just have one question, and I brought it up at the previous meeting, and it's a question that I continue to get. What is the status of the Board of Education audit?
I have not spoken to the auditor as of, since the last time we spoke. Right now, I don't have the numbers from him or anything, so there is nothing to report. Also, I'm glad you brought that up. I also, I reached out to our bond counsel today with regards to the Board of Education, and I saw a letter to the editor today with regards to pilots and how pilots can be used and who should decide on those pilots. The bottom line is, we have to, pilot money can only be distributed a certain way, and that's by the state's legislative body who says how you can spend it. One of the things I was trying to do was to find out if the town can actually bond using pilot money, because we don't own the property. We don't own anything within the school, so I'm looking at that, and I think that we can. I think there's actually new legislation out there with regards to working with the school boards and stuff like that. I did speak with our council, I mean, our council, Board of Education President, last week, we had a great, good discussion, and we're going to update, once we meet again, we're going to update where we're going with it and stuff like that. As of right now, there's no numbers to report back to the audit.
I just, what I'm having a hard time understanding is, almost two months ago to this very meeting, you had made the claim that the Board of Education was mismanaging money, and that was the genesis for this audit, and I'm just baffled why this is no longer a priority for you to pursue and give us information.
I didn't, I didn't, I never said it wasn't a priority. You're the one I voted no on it, so.
That's right.
The bottom line is that when we get the numbers, you will receive them. It's that simple. I have a subcommittee that we have, myself, Frank Naglia, and Matt McGrath. When, when I get those numbers, you will get them.
Well, what's the timeline?
There is no timeline right now. When it's completed by the auditor, you will get them. So, it's that simple. There's nothing to guess here.
Okay, well, you know, we'll just continue to follow up on that till we get an answer. Some specific points of feedback, you know, I did see on November 18, I think it's a fantastic idea that we do the meet and greets with the PPD, but, you know, for the administration, can we move these times to when, you know, working people can make these meetings, it's 1:00 to 3:00? Some of the feedback I received from people that attended is that there was a poor showing of residents, so I think it would really help a lot of people who, you know, support these events.
What are you talking about?
The pizza, the pizza with the police officer at the PAL on November 18.
No, I was there, it was.
I'm just saying, if, I think it's a good idea, but if we can try and do events in the evening, so that way working people can make them, that would be great. My, my other question is, you know, what are the latest updates with the DOT? I know your administration has met with the commissioner, and there were some specific deliverables, so what's the latest on what they're doing?
You mean, there's so many things that are going on with the DOT, which one, you're talking about the corner of Starbucks is and all that?
Yeah, so, you know, talking about where the traffic fatalities.
Yeah, that has been handled by Jamie Klein, who's not here tonight. We can get you the updates from the state and from the commissioner. I will speak to the commissioner myself.
Okay, and the, the one thing that came from the meeting of the Historic Advisory Committee, Nancy Brighton, who chairs it, is, you know, is the administration actively pursuing any sort of, you know, arrangement with the Condit House? You know, it's, it's in a state of disrepair. I understand that there have been conversations in the past, but are we trying to do anything that, you know, could be taxpayer-friendly, but also, you know, preserve a historical asset?
Well, here's, here's, and the one person I've talked with regards to this is Randy Portarello. We've had many conversations about the Condit House and the shape that it's in, it's in really poor shape. So, if we decide to do anything with it, council's going to have to make a decision to pump a lot of money into it. And I don't know, I don't know that we can do that. We're also looking at avenues to try to get grant money, which Randy is very astute and very up to date when it comes to the Condit House with regards to that, but also, it's not owned by the township. It's owned by the association over there. They own it, they have to maintain it in a certain way. I don't know how, when I wasn't the mayor at the time, I don't even know if I was a councilman at the time when this took place. I think it was Mayor Letts that negotiated that deal to keep the house there, whether we're building the condominium instead of knocking it down, and that was an agreement, a developers' agreement that was made between the administration and. So, would I like to buy it? I would love to buy it. I was, I spearheaded that Baldwin House, we got the Baldwin House when I was mayor the first two years. I would love to purchase that property, but I'd also like to know, and that would be for the council, if we could use all this trust fund money, but I don't think we can, but I think we could use it for maintenance of the project. That's another building that we'd have to put on our maintenance program as well. But I would love to save it. I've been inside it, it does need a lot of work, and the difference between us doing work is you got to keep the historical integrity, where costs go up a lot more, so.
Yeah, one of the ideas that.
Kevin knows, right?
One of the ideas that came out of the meeting was that there, there might be a private a private developer who's interested in both, turning it into private office suites, but also preserving the historical integrity of the Condit House. So that's something I can, you know, maybe get some more information on, because I agree with you, we can't just offload the whole cost of the repairs and the maintenance and restoring the property on the taxpayer. But if there's a way to work with a private entity that, you know, accomplishes both goals, that could be a win-win.
It is, and I think it would be. When we purchased the Baldwin House, the whole idea was that, very similar to what you're saying, and nobody, nobody was interested. If you get a private developer to come in to maintain it, they're gonna realize that the cost is not as simple as, you know, buying another commercial property where you can build it as you want, how it is, and once you meet the codes of the construction and zoning, you're good. But it's not with a housing. But there's nothing wrong with investigating it, though.
And the last update I have for the council is recently, I spoke with some leaders in our local Boy Scout chapter, and for those who may be unaware, they've been unable to participate in township events due to some restrictive clauses. And it's not, you know, this administration's fault. It's been there for quite some time. And recently, the Board of Education amended their clauses to allow the Boy Scouts to participate in Board of Education events. So, you know, I had spoken to our township attorney, Mike Lavery, before the meeting, if the administration would be open to, you know, looking at what they're requesting and trying to see what they did with the Board of Ed to allow them to fully participate in township events.
They can fully participate. I think what the issue is, is the joint insurance fund. It was, you can finish up on it, it had to do with insurance.
It was, and this was probably going back two years ago. My recollection of the issue was that they would not agree to indemnify the town if anybody in the Boy Scout organization did something. So, and again, I don't want to, you know, Boy Scouts are a fine organization, whatever, but I think there was a bankruptcy filing, there were some other things, and I think because of a lot of litigation that they had, they couldn't, they were the one organization that could not agree to that clause. So, you know, it'd be interesting to see how the school board was able to work around that, but that was my recollection. It was that, you know, our risk, our insurance carrier required that we be indemnified if, you know, some acts were, they committed some acts, or somebody was injured, and it was their fault, and they couldn't agree to that. So, but if there's a workaround, you know, I could certainly take a look at it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, because I've been speaking to their attorney, and I'm not an attorney, and my primary obligation is the township. Is it okay if I have them contact you?
Yeah, if the mayor's, yeah. The mayor's okay with it, I'm fine with it.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you. So last week, I had the opportunity to go to the League of Municipalities with a lot of the people here. I attended many sessions that offered guidance and resources on initiatives for the municipalities, including Complete Streets and Vision Zero, for road safety, which we're interested in, and the new stormwater MS4 requirements. Also, I attended sessions on economic development and New Jersey climate resiliency sessions that offer educational and cash flow positive opportunities. For every $1 we spend, the state predicts that, to keep our town resilient, that it will save us $13 in the future. So I'm looking forward to discussing some of these things with our, with the council and Mr. Klein when he's back, because we can't pass the burden on to our future government. And on the tractor committee, we will have several vacancies at the end of this year. Mayoral and town, if anybody's interested, or anybody who's gonna be watching this video is interested, they can maybe contact me or the chair, Diana Cantrell, through the township page. Thanks.
Just to piggyback, there was actually one thing I forgot to say. You know, in the league, I think it's a fantastic educational opportunity for us to cross-pollinate ideas with other elected officials, see what are the best practices in other municipalities, along with meeting the latest and greatest vendors out there that can, you know, help municipalities, you know, really evolve. One of the unique vendors that I met, and I might introduce them to the mayor or the business administrator, is an EV charging company that basically, you know, portions off of, you know, a section of municipally-owned parking lots and converts them into charging stations for EVs. And it's a ROI positive for the municipality. So some municipalities have been making six or seven figures from leasing out parking spots that don't go used, and instead for EV charging stations. And I think it could be worth exploring, but the right avenue is for them to talk to the administration.
Most of, yeah, a lot of the sessions that are from New Jersey, the state is providing. Most climate and carbon emissions zero, cash positive grants, opportunities. And the governor had just came out with a real R-E-A-L. It's resiliency, environmental. I don't remember what the acronym is for, but there's a toolkit that every municipality can go into and check out where they might need some projects done and how they can get grants for them. So that's something I would like to look into with whoever's interested. It'd be good for us. Thanks.
Okay, township clerk?
No report.
Okay. What about township attorney? Township attorney?
No report this evening, Council President.
Ordinance is first reading, ordinance 2024:19. Ordinance at Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 420. Order to increase water rates and charges be resolved at the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on December 17, 2024, at 7:00 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter. As the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed, to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
So, before I vote, sorry. Would it be possible to have Sean Andres and head of sewer come in and be available for that hearing when the town hears this? To understand what these increases are? For the water and sewer. Water and sewer increases? Can we have them available?
Water rates aren't determined by him.
Okay.
They're determined by, I think we hired a consultant to do that. I'll find out.
Okay.
And then I'll, we'll get out of there.
Sorry about my hearing, I can't really hear. Come on, I'm up there. So clerk, yes?
Okay. Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
And Mr. Kreefi?
Yes. Okay, ordinance 2024:20. Ordinance to Township Council, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 329, Section 17. Sewer rental fees of the code of the Township Precipity Troy Hills be resolved at the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2024, at 7:00 PM prevailing time or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township. At which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes. Non-consent agenda, Resolution 2024-198, authorizing the Township Precipity Troy Hills to accept a sub-grant award of the federal fiscal year 2024 of Emergency Management Performance Grant and Emergency Management Agency Assistance. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes. Resolution 2024-199, authorizing the execution of utility easement through property-owned Westmont Arlington Plaza Joint Venture. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?
Yes. Resolution 2024-200, authorizing the Township Precipity Troy Hills schedule of Township Council meetings for 2025. Motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Naglia?
Yes.
Mr. Kreefi?